I don't have to sit in lobby for very long, I'll tell you.
Right.
This is my list that I was trying to put that I made.
This is my list.
Everybody ready?
Ready.
Yeah?
Yep.
Mark, you ready?
Manistee City Council for Tuesday, August 1st, 2017, 7:00 PM is now called to order. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic of the Republic, which stands by nation, under God, indivisible, with infinite justice for all.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. I would like to amend the agenda tonight to add item XD, which would be a consideration for a closed session pursuant of Section 8, subsection 8 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, in order to consider a written opinion from the city attorney, except for disclosure pursuant to Section 13, Section 1G of the Michigan Freedom of Information Act.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Pontiac to amend the agenda, to add to tonight's meeting, item 10D, which would be the consideration of a closed session pursuant to Section 8, subsection 8 of the Michigan Open Meeting Act, in order to consider a written opinion from the city attorney exempt from disclosure pursuant to Section 13, subsection 1G of the Michigan Freedom of Information Act. Is there any discussion on this motion?
The city clerk, please take role.
Please roll call first. For roll call?
Yes.
To start the meeting.
Okay. Take a roll call first.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes. I mean, here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Here.
City manager?
Here.
City attorney?
Here.
City clerk?
Here.
DPW director?
Here.
Finance director?
Here.
Planning and zoning director?
Here.
Public safety director?
Here.
May you please take role on the motion?
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizen comments on agenda-related items. Citizens may make comments on agenda-related items, limited to five minutes. If there are any citizens that wish to make comment on agenda items, please come forward, state your name, address. Are there no public comments? Thank you. Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during a regular course of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, quarterly investment update, notification regarding the next work session, consideration of the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce Grapes on the River event, consideration of the Manistee community run for the Special Olympics. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Cooper. Is there any discussion? Would you please take role?
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, item A, consideration of the appointment of a historic district study committee. In response to the discussion city council had at their work session on June 13th, 2017, the local historic district act has been reviewed to establish the process to review the Manistee commercial historic district boundaries and determine if modifications to the district are warranted. If council wants to move forward with the review, a historic district study committee must be appointed. At this time, council could take action to appoint Denise Blakeslee, Steve Harold, and Maureen Berry as members of the historic district study committee to review the Manistee commercial historic district boundaries and determine if modifications to the district are warranted.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitliff. Is there any discussion?
Yes. I have some comments. Is this going to be just limited to boundaries?
Yes.
It's...
There might be, you know, whether specific buildings are in or out, so all together is part of the boundaries.
And, okay, I just want to make sure that that's the only thing that they're going to be talking about, is the boundaries.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm assuming, but I'll ask the question, are these meetings will all be open to the public and will be advertised or not?
If they're subcommittee of the city, they would be, yes.
Okay.
You know, I believe the beginning of this is that we've had several work sessions concerning the Historic District Commission. And I know several of them have been prompted by Mayor Protem Zalinski. And concerns run a little deeper than just the boundaries of the district. There were concerns about the process of approval and concerns that people were possibly overstepping their bounds. Is this a forerunner to this? And again, as Councilmember Beaton pointed out, or is this strictly an issue of looking at the boundaries and making a determination of whether or not the boundaries are appropriate?
Well, at this time, it's just the boundaries. That's all we're looking at with the study commission?
Yeah. It's a pretty limited number of people here. We have Mark Federer at the museum that is quite prominent as far as the history of Manistee and such. My feelings are that he would be, you know, a good resource to add to that list of names. And I would personally like to see a council member as part of the process also.
Well, when we, in discussions with Denise, what we looked at is that there are still two members in the community from the original historic district study group. So we felt, because we're using that same information, we'd put those two on for certain. We talked about Mark Federer. We didn't really want to put him in a position because he is a resource, almost like a staff person to the Historic District Commission because he doesn't work for them. We didn't want to put him in that potentially compromising position. And so we thought someone from the planning commission would be beneficial. Well, that was our thoughts on it.
I have no objection to Ms. Blakeslee being on there, but I would see the same conflict. It is the primary, the principal person for the planning and zoning commission would have the same issues that Mr. Federer would have.
Well, I think she has a different position than Mark does because she is city staff and it's not, you know, he works for and does things for the Historic District Commission. So we viewed him as different.
Because I know city staff are often appointed as liaison or non-voting members and such that are seldom part of an act of commission. So it seems like that's kind of breaking with tradition there.
It's not necessarily breaking with tradition. She was on that before, that original study commission. So we just thought that we would try to keep those that were still around. They served admirably on it. And we just had, that way we had one position to fill. That was our thought process for it.
Would somebody be able to walk me through the process? This is the first step in the process, if I understand this correctly.
It is the first step in the process. The process is essentially the same as it was when the original historic district was established. You have to start with the study committee. They go through much the same process that was gone through before. Of course, a lot of the process involved gathering information about the history of Manistee. And so all that information isn't going to change. And so a lot of what Denise went through previously, they're not going to have to repeat all of that. But it is the first step in the process to determine, do we want to change the boundaries for the historic district? With respect to the other questions too, if I could just comment, the mayor, I think, asked, you know, there's some other concerns about the commission and the process that they follow. That's not something that council is able to review. Once that commission is established, if someone doesn't agree with how their processing requests, the appeal is right now to the state of Michigan, down to Lansing. So it's not anything that would come within your purview. And Denise has put in place a process of some training specific for the Historic District Commission. It's a consultant that used to work for Chippewa and is going to come up and talk to the Historic District Commission about their role and, you know, suggestions on how they should be viewing any people that, or any projects that come before them. So we're trying to get them educated by someone that's a subject matter expert.
And if I read the law correctly, this is, to change any of this, this is about the only option we have at this point.
Yeah, the, eliminating the historic district, we just didn't see as being something that you could even consider at this point. Again, I think we've talked about this before. There have been changes in the law that have been proposed but have not come through as yet, which might have given that as it being, as an option. But really, if this council wants to take a look at the historic district, the consideration at this point could only be whether I want to change the boundary or not, or what the council wants to change the boundary.
Thank you.
When we're talking about the boundaries and the role of this commission, and they revisit the study and make their recommendations, is that a recommendation to council for approval? Or do they have authority to redraw the lines?
No, it's going to have to come back to council and then it has to go to the state level, I believe, as well. Public hearings, so.
You know, I've had several citizens contact me because they've seen this on the agenda and they were wondering about the process and when would be the appropriate time to interact. And I know there's public hearings that would be scheduled and such also.
Yes, and I may not have done this for council and may have sent it to the city manager, but I think I had prepared something about the different points in the process and I'll tomorrow, see if I can't send an email to the council so you have that information as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sarah.
Yeah, and I think that information was provided previously, you know, some time ago, but we can send it again as a refresher.
Any further discussion or comment? City clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. On item B, consideration of authorizing installation of a private water well in the city. Morton Salt Company currently operates a private water well within the city. The well is failing and requires replacement. Morton has requested authorization to install a new well located near Fifth and Ramsdale Streets. The well will be used for non-potable water process, for non-potable water process, water within the plant. Section 1040-15 of the codified ordinances requires city approval for private wells. The city attorney has prepared the authorizing terms. At this time, council could take action to approve the authorization for Morton to install a non-potable water well for the use of plant process water and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitliff, second by Mayor Protem Zalinski. Is there any discussion?
I hope we approve this to keep Morton Salt in business. Throw that out there.
Any other comments? And city clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Thank you.
Item C, consideration of the sale of surplus city-owned property. Staff has identified and reviewed vacant city-owned property. As required under Council Policy Number 3, the properties within the city were reviewed by the planning commission at their meeting on July 6th, 2017. The planning commission determined the properties should be offered for sale. One parcel located in Filer Township has been identified along with the Renaissance Park and industrial properties in Manistee Township. At this time, council could take action to authorize the marketing and sale of surplus city property.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Whitliff and a second by Councilmember Pontiac. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank staff for working diligently on this and preparing this. Planning commission did their due diligence on this. It's a good way to help out the residents with extra property, so, thank you.
Just have one quick question. The property on, by the condos that are on the river?
Yes, yep.
That section in there, is that anything that, for some reason, I have this thing about giving up riverfront property because they don't make anymore. Is there anything that the planning commission talked about that addressed any use for that other than just putting it up for sale? That the city residents could use, is what I'm trying to get at.
As a park? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, as a fishing pier or whatever. I don't know, I just...
I would like to see it go up for sale. To me, we have too many parks.
The planning commission did not earmark it for anything other than as marketable property. There would be an interest in it. We could retain an easement for the sewer, which would also then allow a riverwalk.
Okay. Thank you.
We don't have a graphic representation of what we're offering, of what we're planning to put up for sale, do we?
Pardon?
Do we have an overhead that shows the properties?
No, they were in the packet.
Okay.
I'm just curious about the motion. It doesn't include any properties in the city.
Well, if we're talking about next to the Edgewater, it would include property in the city.
Planning commission determined properties to be offered for sale, one parcel located. Okay. Never mind, I didn't read the first sentence. It's my mistake. As... Yeah, it would be the... Properties within the city were reviewed, so they're including the parcels in the city. I just jumped to that second sentence and looked at the others. I'm sorry. I know I had seen it in the packet, so that's why I was curious.
And these will be for sale at market value?
The properties were kind of divided in your packets. There were the properties that are kind of like half lots, unbuildable lots, or properties with topography issues. It might be easier to try and market that to an adjoining property owner because it would only be of value to them. We identified three parcels that would be easily, independently sold, the two on Monroe and run across on the river. We were looking at actually having, I've worked on a RFP for a realtor to market those. We figured we could get the most money out of that. We had some appraisals on the one on Monroe Street. We will probably get an appraisal on the one on the river, just to make sure that we're not...
Undervaluing.
Undervaluing it. And then, of course, we have the industrial park properties, which would, again, be set up with a broker, realtor, to market those separately as industrial properties and commercial properties.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions or discussion? City clerk, please take role.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Item D, consideration of an amendment to the City of Manistee Charter Township of Filer Agreement for the Collection and Treatment of Wastewater with an effective date of April 12th, 2016. The City of Manistee and the Charter Township of Filer entered into an agreement for the city's collection and treatment of wastewater for Filer. Filer has been informed that by a federal regulation, the agreement must contain a provision that is assignable and that as long as there is an outstanding loan balance, Filer remains subject to present and future regulations of the United States Department of Agricultural Rural Development. The proposed amendment to the agreement has been drafted by Richard Wilson on behalf of Filer. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. Mr. Wilson and the city attorney are partners in the same firm. However, the language amendment is only being made to satisfy a requirement for Filer's financing, so there is no request for review by outside council. At this time, city council could take action to approve the amendment to the City of Manistee Charter Township of Filer Agreement for the Collection and Treatment of Wastewater and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Zalinski and a second by Councilmember Whitliff. Is there any discussion?
No, it sounds like a wise thing to do.
Would you please take role?
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitliff?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Zalinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements. Item A, a report from the planning commission, planning and zoning administrator, and Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts. Regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, or department. At this time, Ms. Denise Blakeslee will report on the activities of the planning commission and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Well, I'm actually going to give both the planning commission and my department report. Because I am liaison to the planning commission, they will overlap a little bit, so please bear with me. But we're going to start off this evening talking about what the planning commission has done in this past year. After four years, we had an adopted master plan that was done last August with final adoption by city council. That was one of the last components we needed for our RRC certification. Planning commission assisted me in reviewing and preparing sites that we have with our annual meeting with city council as required under the program. That meeting was done in December and we have, we also invite the Brownfield, DDA, Historic District Commission, planning commission, and city council to those meetings. We just talked about it. We went through identified city-owned properties for surplus that could be sale, for sale and marketed, and take tax exempt properties off the tax roll, put them on the tax roll, and also bring sale money back into the city. We have been busy with special use permits. We issued one to Gloria's Flowers Shop down on Fifth Street. The Green Acres did a PUD amendment and they actually did a whole site for their property that included just the addition to the building, but another building along with some smaller units. In the future, we have the Chippewa cottages, that's under Stillwater Investment, North Channel Investors. Jim and Susan Matthews have a special use permit for their building at 334 River Street. So any amendment to that plan, if it's large enough, has to go back to the planning commission. They determined it was a minor change. They can now construct a gazebo on their site if they wish to. Joe Hayes is doing the mini self-storage facility on 12th Street. Paul Swedorski does the sand mining at that site also. They are the only special use permits that have an expiration date. His first permit expired. They gave him a new permit for another five years. They also approved a PUD for the Olson's, for Senior Center and the Senior Village. In conjunction with the requests from Chippewa Cottage Resorts, they were required to have an alley vacation request, and that was approved by the planning commission and also by city council. And then we move on to our parcel splits and combinations. John and Jean Soltis on Oak Street, they had properties that they owned individually with themselves in a rental, so they reconfigured their properties to more suit their needs. 411 River Street and the parking lot next to the city drug, there was a little encroachment issue that was also taken care of by a parcel split and combination. And then just this past council meeting, you approved the request for a parcel split for the Manistee Golf and Country Club, and I guess they're gold now because I wrote them as being gold. Sorry about that. Site plan reviews. Bayview Condominiums, the planning commission's site plan review committee approved the construction of an accessory building on their site. Green Acres, when they started working on their project, they ran into some issues and their site plan required a relocation of the maintenance garage and their dumpster, which was approved by the planning commission. And Tracy Lindeman at 308 River Street, that is the Hokinson Building, got approval for installing a covered deck on the rear of his building. We went through a large zoning amendment process. They did a zoning audit as part of the RRC certification program that resulted in numerous zoning amendments and also a request from the River Park Place for Section 514 vehicle parking and multiple unit dwellings, those who have just approved probably since June and July. Training. We have two planning commissioners, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Slavinsky, who have enrolled in the online citizen planner program. Commissioner Slavinsky has received his certification, as has our ZBA member, Glenn Zering. They are now talking, if they want to go for their master citizen planner certification, they have to do a capstone project. And they will allow them to do that together as a group or individually. And since Kurt Schindler's retirement, it's been hard for us to get training here. Typically, we become the hub for the county. We hold the trainings here at city hall, but we have, since they have to, each member who has citizen planner certification to maintain it, has to have six CEUs every year. And what we've done is we've purchased webinars that we can either do as a group at city hall or they can do individually at home to maintain their certification. Today, I actually went through and added up the years of service. Our planning commission members together with two new members have over 75 years of service. And our members are Maureen Berry, she's our vice chair, Erin Bennett, Ray Fortier, Marlene McBride, who serves as a secretary, Bob Slavinsky, Mark Whitliff, who's our chair, Roger Yoder, and I am both a staff liaison and the recording secretary to the planning commission. The planning commission meets the first Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM. Agendas minutes are available on the website. And please note, the November meeting will be held on Wednesday, not Thursday. Are there any questions relating to the planning commission? No, I think you do an excellent job as staffers and... They are great volunteers. We're very, very fortunate.
Planning commission was instrumental in the redevelopment-ready certification for the community. And in the meetings I've attended, they always do a very thorough research and great diligence in performing their duties. So I thank you for...
So I thank you for coordinating those efforts and being the recording secretary.
Denise, I just want to thank you for all the work that you put in on the Planning Commission. You do a fantastic job getting us ready, and all the commissioners do this on a volunteer basis. They do it for the love of the community. Each and every meeting, they come primed, asking questions. They never sit on their hands. They're ready to go and make the best for the community. So I just want to thank you and everyone.
Are you ready for me to move into my report?
Yes.
Okay. Planning and zoning department. Day-to-day operations, this past year, we've issued 32 land use permits, 15 sign permits, 25 certificates of appropriateness for the Historic District Commission, two home occupations, three violation letters, and we also have customer service surveys that we do hand out for land use projects that are building-related. I am also a webpage administrator, along with Ed Bradford. Cindy Lakovich also is a publisher. That means she does publish the, post the council agendas, her boards and commissions agendas and minutes, and she does maintain their calendars. Ed was very kind because we had just gotten this information just before his report, but he let me have it for mine. We had a review by Civic Plus about the activity on the city website. As you can see, we've had a large number of visits, over 135,000. We've had total views on pages, searches, the duration of the visits, like two minutes, and the actions provision is about 2.3. We were in kind of like the upper percentile, am I correct, Ed, of people and visits for our website. They broke it down a little bit further into the top visited pages. Beaches are always very popular, the webcams, we have, the Ramsdale Theater has gotten a lot of hits, our port facilities, bid postings, and searched terms. They also noted beaches, employment jobs. Spring pickup was very popular. Hotels, we don't actually have anything relating to individual businesses. We refer them by links to the Chamber, the Visitors Bureau, their websites. We don't maintain that stuff here, and then bid searches. I also work with the Spicer Group on the rental program. We are in the middle of Cycle Three. That will be completed this year, and then we will start back over with Cycle One. This has been, it's been three years since they've taken over the contract. They do excellent work. Mark Neeson still does the inspections. It's really nice for the landlords to have somebody that they're familiar to work with. And Chris and Wendy are amazing handling the calls, and Pat and Sean are great backup resources. Boards and commissions, I'm the recording secretary to the Brownfield. I'm Historic District Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, staff liaison, and recording secretary. I've served on the County Educational Steering Committee. That's kind of on hold now that Kurt Schindler has retired. Hopefully, when a new, we have a new MSU Extension Director here, we'll be able to pick those back up. I work on the DDA Business Development Committee, the DDA Design Committee. I attended RRC Certified Communities Meeting in Lansing in April, and I went to the set program meetings. Training, I attended the MAP Conference in October of last year. I will also be going in September this year. And for Citizen Planner, we purchased webinars for the members to maintain their CEU certifications, and I also have to maintain mine. Projects, I worked on a policy for commercial uses in the right-of-way. That was with conjunction with the DDA. I'm working on mobile food vending. Again, input from the DDA, the Chamber, we, you know, kind of go around every department, and we're still working on that, and hopefully, we'll have that done for next season. City-owned property, well, we just went through that, so I won't spend a lot of time on it. Development, pretty much the ones on the left are the ones that were approved by the Planning Commission with special use permits, but just note that 254, 289, 337, 346, 48 River Street, 400, 401, 451, 453, 457, and 480 Water Street, we have had developers and people come into the office and work with staff. The DDA is also very involved in that, so we do have a lot of people interested in Manistee. The Planning and Zoning Department actually received in October 2016 the Key Partner Award from MSU Extension for our work that we've done with them on the Citizen Planner Program and bringing land use education to Manistee. Again, we've adopted our new master plan, and we received our RRC certification in January 2017, and today, actually, I have spent most of my day working on my biannual report. Any other questions?
Comments? I want to thank you, all that you have to do, and when I have some question that may appear to be rather simple to you, you always have been accommodating and take the time, although you're very busy, to answer my question, and I do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
You know, it's an easy thing to criticize something when you don't get what you're looking for, or the answer isn't what you were expecting to get, but overlooked is the many things that you do on a day-in, day-out basis, and it is truly appreciated. I would echo Mayor Protem Zalinski's comment. You know, I've never, never found you to be impatient or annoyed if I've asked something that may not seem relevant to you, but is a question a constituent has asked me, or a curiosity that I've had in the planning and zoning process. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
At this time, Mr. Xavier Vona will report on the activities of the Ramsdale Regional Center for the Arts and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Good evening. I'm excited to tell you about our aggressive and diverse programming that we have going on this summer, and if you haven't already checked out the Carl Jurgens Watercolor Exhibits, which is going on now. Tomorrow is the last day, and it's open from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. That's a remarkable exhibit, and it's called Four Seasons, so you'll see all four seasons represented in the room. And I want to thank Bill Hatendorf, who's on our board, who's been instrumental in putting that exhibit together, and all of the community members as well, including Mr. David Wild. And just a few updates for you in advance to my report to you, which is going to be in October 17. We have our 2018 gala set, and that'll be on May 5th, Saturday, 2018. We were pleased that we exceeded our 2016, 2017 goal of 30,000 for our fundraising, and that was in raised revenue, and we exceeded that by over 10,000. And as we look forward, this fiscal year, we're planning on raising 60,000, and we hope to exceed that as well. We are, at the same time, working on a capital campaign to improve our lighting and our sound system. The wedding business and revenue continues to be strong. This year, we have 17 weddings booked at the Ramsdale, and, which has had a very favorable impact on the Ramsdale's bottom, and already, we have four booked for the 2018. We expect to add more, and we plan on having a bridal show in January, which will be, I think we've had some in the past, but we're excited to bring that back to the Ramsdale, and our goal is to book 20 weddings in 2018. You should have received some information on some of our shows taking place at the Ramsdale. And just to kind of highlight a few of the ones that are upcoming, this Friday, as you may know, we have a Simon and Garfunkel Tribute Band performing at 7:00. There is a great one-woman theater show. Her name's Karen Curly, and she'll be performing at the Ramsdale Theater on Friday, September the 8th. The Grand Rapids Ballet will be returning again to the Ramsdale Theater on September 29th, that is close to the Friday, and we're excited to have a unique cultural concert here. It's South American sounds. We're going to have two bands, one from playing Argentinian music and another one that is actually coming from Brazil that will be performing at the Ramsdale on Friday, October 6th, and I'd be happy to update you on some of the more, some other shows when I return on the 17th of October. Any questions?
I just want to say congratulations for raising $40,000.
Thank you.
Off in the right direction, this council. I know, I totally appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your time.
Concerns and comments. Citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city development. Citizens in attendance should be recognized by the mayor for comment, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Are there any citizens who wish to make comment?
Boozeau, Glenn Zering, 321 Fifth Street here in Manistee. I recycle a lot. I just hate throwing things away. If you can get it into a proper program, I do definitely support that, and it seems every time I go to our recycling center, the bins are full. And I go there at least once a week, and I've seen some of the posts and some of the stories about the recycling issue, and I would just like to suggest that we look at an alternative, since this is a city recycling project, and it appears that we have non-residents who are using it to get rid of the recycling. First, I applaud their efforts to get rid of things, but second, we're paying for it, and I will fund that. I have looked around a little bit at some of the recycling programs, and I think that we could limit the availability of our recycling center to our residents in such a way which would serve them properly, but also contain what usually is an overflow problem. I would like to suggest that we go to five hours a day, either five or six days a week, like Tuesday, Sunday, and that we also have a part-time employee add to our DPW. Sorry about that, Jeff, but there would be someone who would actually be there to check the driver's licenses of people coming in. This way, we could make sure that people were using it properly, and if somebody else felt like coming in, if they had a car, you know, with some of the recycling, $5 fee. If they've got the pickup truck, a $10 fee. I mean, that's all hypothetical and has to be worked out, but I think that we need to protect a city service for the city residents. I just would like to stress that and ask you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizen comments? If not, we will run to officials of staff. City Clerk?
Nothing, Your Honor.
City Manager?
Nothing at this time.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Public Safety Director?
Good evening. Just want to take a moment. I know that the city manager passed along information about some wow services that we had this past Sunday. Two of our officers responded to a subject down, and when they got there, found him unresponsive. Found Eddie had ingested a fentanyl patch. Don't know what type, how we got that into his system, but they wound up using a nasal system that we have to hopefully reverse these situations when we have these overdoses, and by the time our medic unit got there, we were able to have regained consciousness, and they probably won't have stayed in his life, so just wanted to reiterate that. I know that you were ahead of forward, so, thanks.
And that was Officer Goodspeed?
Goodspeed, and yes.
Public Works?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Finance?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Planning and zoning?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate, or thank Fred the Point for these two people that own the property on the corner of Fifth and Maple, where that property building was that burned down years ago. They sent me a thank you, and I met with them at the House of Flavors, and then we went through the fire department, and Fred the Point gave a detailed tour of the fire department that I didn't even know about. I want to thank you for your time.
Councilmember Beaton?
I've had quite a few citizens call me on different topics.
Here.
One of the topics is the River Walk on the north side of the river, down where Memorial Park is, the Dan Shell, there's a walkway. It seems to be in disrepair, and I just wanted to bring that to the city's attention, that people are using it and they are hoping that it gets repaired. Also, had some citizens contact me about shrubs and low-hanging branches over the sidewalks. Now, that is a responsibility of the homeowner, and I, and it would be nice if the homeowners could be reminded, maybe the newspaper could remind them, that that is a responsibility that they turn those back so that people can have safe passage.
On the side of us.
And not to be forgotten, a couple of, well, three calls in the past week about deer and the fact that they're still a nuisance, and what are we going to do about them? And now, the most recent addition to it is skunks, because on the north side, we seem to have a bit of a scud problem, and we also have a scud that's almost completely opial. It's just got one small black dot on it that's been making its rouse, so it's kind of a novelty, I guess. But they want to know how to get rid of the skunks, and I don't think it's, not really sure that that falls into the city's responsibility, but I would like to be able to tell them something.
I would suggest they call the DNR. Not a lot we're going to be able to do for them, and I think the DNR will probably just say it's a product of where, you know, just living. It's going to happen. You're going to attract them from time to time.
Kind of stinks.
Anyway, it's been a pleasure talking to a lot of citizens.
Okay. Yeah.
See?
I just wanted to share an experience I had last night down on First Street. First Street, we launched parking lot. I happened to be driving by and noticed a few of our fire trucks and ambulances. Of course, the first thing that went through my mind was something bad has happened. Filer Township and the City of Manistee was out doing some demonstrations, or actually testing some new nozzles, which my understanding of, and the drift of what I've got was as far superior to what we have, and I guess what I'm trying to say is it was just really neat to see the working together, the planning, the planning for the worst and hoping for the best, and I encourage that, and I appreciate their efforts.
Councilmember Beaton?
Recently, there's been a lot of noise about dogs on the River Walk again, and I just want to throw that out there that I'm against this. As we've talked before, probably train the animal, but you can't train the person. We, that's something that we don't need, is animals on the River Walk. That's it.
Councilmember Pontiac?
Yeah, I've had a few people contact me in my area, the truck route, if anybody who's in charge of that, if they're, we've seen a lot of semis that are off that truck route into the, you know, side streets and stuff like that. If anything we can do?
We can have a police department monitor it.
I mean, just the speeding or staying on the truck route.
I have a certificate that's been given to us. The Michigan State Historic Preservation Office is pleased to join the National Park Service and congratulating you on your participation in the Certified Local Government Program. Manistee is one of Michigan's 30 certified local governments, and is one of nearly 2,000 communities across the nation to recognize that preservation and continued use of historic structures is vital to creating interest. structures is vital to creating interest in vibrant places where people want to be. And we have an enclosed certificate, which I'll give to the city manager for appropriate display here in City Hall along with the correspondence. It's always nice to, to get some recognition like that. The city manager and I attended the intergovernmental meeting a week ago, maybe two weeks ago. One of the things that I highlighted at the intergovernmental meeting is having the opportunity this year to meet a lot of people through the Fourth of July parade activities and walking around downtown, meeting people at the House of Flavors or Fillmore or Famous Flinders or, or other places. It's really interesting to note that despite some of the things you hear and some of the negatives that are cast out there, there's not a single person that has visited the Marina that I've talked to, or some more other locations, that has mentioned a vacant storefront, or a missing tile on a building. They, they all speak about a very pleasant experience in visiting the city of Manistee and what a resource we have. Mayor Protem Zalinski and myself were talking with a couple that were docked at the, at the Marina, and it's the third visit they've made here this year. They, they said it's just a wonderful resource, and they're sharing it with their friends because they consider it a hidden secret. I definitely see things swinging in a positive direction in the city, and, and visitors are testing and commenting on all the positives and the enjoyment they get from the community. So I'd like to thank Public Works, Public Safety for keeping it up, zoning. You know, every, everybody plays a hand in City Hall and the city's staff in making a good presentation to the visitors that come in here and spend the dollars and support the docks and help our local economy. So everybody's done a great job, and it's very rewarding to be able to hear those comments from all these people.
I'd just like to comment a little bit more on that. This, first one was from the American Parade, Luke Cruz. They go out and they, they spend a whole year traveling. They start out, we have them from St. Louis, they head south to the winner, and they went the way around and come back. He told me he had the fish fry on Friday night that he got ahold, through Facebook, got ahold of some of the other members. They just kind of, they don't travel together, they kind of just go along, but they know who, where they are and what's going on. They got ahold of some of their friends and before, in the next two days, four other boats had stopped here because of their, because of how happy they were and how they appreciated the town. So I think there's a lot of good things happening. And I'm going to share this with the Public Safety Director, this information, so we may want to get it on our Facebook and start advertising it.
And with that, we entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Can I make a motion?